Good afternoon and welcome to the May 26, 2015 Richmond School District Two School Board Trustees meeting. I want to thank everyone for being here and we've just come from the executive session and thank the board for their hard work in that session. At this time, we will stand and we'll have an inspirational moment by our board member, Craig Plank, and he will lead us also in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. Yesterday, of course, was Memorial Day, a great day for hot dogs, hamburgers, some fun in the sun and what marks many times the beginning of summer, but it also was a great celebration of our freedom and most importantly honoring those individuals who have given their life to ensure our country's freedom. So before we begin the, our customary reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, I wanted to spend a few moments reflecting on the importance of the pledge's very words. You know, what a great reminder it is to pledge our allegiance, our loyalty to this great nation, a standing republic in which we, the people, are able to elect our leaders, our representatives, both locally and nationally. And although we, the people, vary so greatly in so many ways, we are a nation of one. We are proud Americans and under the divine nature of God, we are Americans with the freedom to express our differing opinions, views, and philosophies. And the neat thing is, it's in this liberty that sparks the debates that lead to our progress. And as we know, freedom is delicate from wars past and losing those who have fought so valiantly, we still deal with entities in this world who want to destroy our way of life. And so, one thing is certain, we are and must remain indivisible. And so finally, in honor of our fallen warriors, heroes, moms, dads, sons, and daughters, brothers and sisters, I thank you for the liberty and justice you have protected for us all. So if you would, pledge allegiance to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Plank. You may be seated. As we start our board meeting also, we certainly want to remember the Ridgeview family as a community and the family of the young man who lost his life over the weekend. Certainly remember them in our thoughts and in our prayers. Next on our agenda, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the current agenda.
To move.
Your second. To move by Ms. Brill, second by Mr. Manning. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the approval of our consent agenda.
To.
Ms. Manning.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the addendum Personnel Number One on the addendum and have Number Two removed for separate vote.
It's been moved by Ms. Manning, is her second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Plank. Any discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion on the removed item.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the district's recommendation on Addendum Two.
I second it.
Moved by Mr. Manning, second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Give you a little second if you type in. We move that we approve the district's recommendation on agenda item Number Two, Personnel Number To restate the motion, the motion is to approve the district's recommendation of Addendum Number Two, made by Mr. Manning, second by Ms. Brill. Any further discussion? Motion passes five two. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is special recognition. Dr. Hamm.
Libby Ruff will be leading this wonderful opportunity to recognize our students and faculty.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, Dr. Hamm, board members, and welcome also to our staff, members of the community, and parents and students who are here. Thank you for being with us tonight as we recognize many student and faculty achievements and awards. And our board member, Ms. Mackey, is going to come forward and help pass out certificates. Of course, it's a very busy time of year for everyone and we're glad the ones that could be here tonight. Some will not be able to join us, of course, because they've probably got like five or six activities going on, but we're going to recognize them and put their name up on the screen when we get to their award. And I believe our first group is here, saw them in their uniforms. It's the Bengal Battalion Drill Team from Blythewood High School. If you would come forward as I call your name. James Collins, Alicia Riley, Michael Taylor, Devon Wilton, their instructor. Come with them as well as Lieutenant Colonel Charles White. Brenda Hafner, principal, cannot be here tonight, and so I believe maybe Assistant Principal Jennifer Kane, if she's here, if she'll come forward with her students. This team won first place overall in the JROTC High School Nationals in the Color Guard Competition. The battalion's color guard competed against thirty other teams of various JROTC branches and finished at the top. The color guard was commanded by Cadet Collins, carrying the American flag. The state flag was carried by Cadet Riley. The two rifle guards were cadets Taylor and Wilton. It's a really exciting honor to recognize you the day after Memorial Day. It's very appropriate and congratulations. Absolutely. Let's get him up, come up. Sergeant First Class, what's his first name? Frank Bell. Sergeant, will you please come forward and let's get you in the picture. We don't mind bending protocol around here if it's about recognizing our students and our employees. Congratulations.
Yes.
Ms. Kane, can you come back up front? We're not done with Blythewood High School. Y'all can be seated, thank you. Now, we're going to honor some graphic students from Blythewood High School. Come forward as I call your name. Patrick Dixon, Teagan Dillon, and Jason Jeffers, along with their teacher, Michelle Fox. These students took first place at the South Carolina Skills USA Graphics Competition. The competition is a state-level competition for public high school and college students enrolled in career and technology education programs. The Blythewood students won first place for promotional bulletin board, earning a near-perfect score in their very first time in the competition. The first-place win also earns them the opportunity to go on and compete at the Nationals. The school chapter received a large monetary award for having the highest increase in student membership. So congratulations to our winners in this whole chapter. Ms. Kane, I'm going to ask you to stay up here just a little bit longer. We're now moving on to our 2015 North-South Soccer Classic. And actually, Ms. Kane, I'd like for you to stand in for Reed Hunter. He was, he's at the Blythewood High School Soccer Banquet tonight. So he made the 2015 North-South Soccer Classic. And we also want to call up Daniel Murray from Ridgeview High School, his coach, Brian Butler, and Principal Dr. Brenda Mack-Foxworth, who's on the team with Reed. Daniel's on the team with Reed. Founded in 1989, the North-South Soccer Classic has evolved into one of the premier prep sports events annually in the Palmetto State. The game features seventy-two of the state's top boys and girls seniors in an all-star contest. This year, it will be held on June 13th at the College of Charleston Stadium in Mount Pleasant. Daniel and Reed will play together on the North team. We congratulate them and wish them lots of success. Dr. Mack, you can stay up here. Dr. Mack, you want to stay up here? And we will call up to join you for talented, actually, five talented, determined young ladies who met, who we met last year at this time. We'll start with Arisia Bush, Janita Ellisgar, Lenaya Martin, Faith Mackey. Those are the four runners. Their fifth member of the team is also here with them, Aleah Brooks, along with their coach, Amber Haver. Now, they're walking very slowly right now, but I don't want that to fool y'all, okay? Because slow is about the last thing they are. These members of the Ridgeview Girls Track and Field Team won first place for the second year in a row, beat the state record for the second year in a row in the four-by-four-hundred meter relay at the State Track and Field Championships. They were seeded second going into the state competition, but they were determined to win. With some, now, these are the words of their coach, who are just so inspiring. "With some Olympic-style workouts, some murderous ice bath sessions, and some goal-setting, the girls each hit their splits and broke the state record with two freshmen and two juniors with their time of three forty-eight point eighty-one." Arisia Bush also won the state championship in the four-hundred-meter dash. So like I said, slow does not describe these ladies. Congratulations, we are so proud of you. We have another state track and field champion who could not be here tonight, actually, because Christian Hythe hurt herself today playing basketball. But I believe her coach, Trina McFadden, is here. Trina, if you want to come forward and get Christian's certificate. Let me tell you about Christian, though. She won the state high jump competition. This is her first year doing high school track and field and her first year in the high jump, and she won the state competition. She worked diligently with her coach's help to craft the skill needed to dominate the field. Ms. Hythe is very competitive and she does not like to lose, and she cleared a five-foot, six-inch jump at the state meet. And you may also recognize the game because, her name, because she's a member of the Lady Vikings basketball team. We congratulate Christian and her coach on a great year. Our next Spring Valley Group Assistant Principal, Rob Herron, is filling in for Jeff Timoney. So I'm going to get him to come up and we are going to bring up some soon-to-be-published poets from Spring Valley High School. We have Tyler Bacon, Ethan Bull, Zaraya Castile, Melicia Doctor, Lauren Garrett, don't be shy, Shayna Peart, Destiny Lewis, Diallo McClarity, Yumarius Motley, Shayna Peart, I think I said her name twice, and make sure I didn't skip over Megan Huntley, Ty Talent, and LaJoy Watley.
Did I call up them all?
Got myself confused with my notes. And their teacher, Michelle Maxberry. Ms. Maxberry encouraged her students in her English I college prep and English III college prep classes to enter a national poetry contest from Creative Communications for extra credit. Each student had to submit a poem, twenty-one lines or less. It could rhyme or not rhyme, and it had to, of course, be an original creation. She entered them as a bulk submission and each, each student has been notified that their works were selected for publication in the next Creative Communications Anthology. Spring Valley also received one of the 2015 Writing Achievement Awards because of the exceptionally high merit of their entries. Next, I'd like to ask Rice Creek Elementary Principal, Sean Bishden, to please come forward. Mr. Bishden received the Tenenbaum Award from the South Carolina School Leadership Executive Institute. The institute began in 2000 by then-State Superintendent Inez Tenenbaum, and it was designed to give principals an opportunity to enhance their skills in leadership, management, and educational best practices. The Tenenbaum Award is for the person who has meant the most to the learning of the group as a whole, the person who has brought ideas to the table most consistently, who was able to focus the group on the issues at hand, and who was able to get classmates to dig deeper into ideas. The winner this year is our own Sean Bishden, one of our outstanding principals. Another person that we're always proud to honor is Dr. Karen Cooper-Haver. Dr. Cooper-Haver would please come forward. She's the coordinator of our Family Intervention Services and was selected to receive the 2015 American Association for Marriage and Family Therapy Divisional Contribution Award for the exceptional work and service she has given to the South Carolina Division. She now joins an esteemed group of members who have demonstrated outstanding commitment to the success of the association. Family Intervention Services works with students and families to address issues at the home that may be affecting a student's academic performance. Ultimately, the team works to get the students back on track in the classroom. Dr. Cooper-Haver will be presented the award at the national meeting in Austin, Texas, this September, and we are very excited to honor and congratulate her tonight. Now, this is our last recognition before school's over, and we had a couple of students, as try as we may, their schedules just never worked out for them to be recognized in person. So we do want to just mention them and they're up on the board, on the screen. We had three National Merit $2,500 scholarships. Richard Chin from Spring Valley High, Sarah Lee from Spring Valley High, and Austin Lippert for Richland Northeast. Ete, excuse me, Etei Almore won a National Gold Key Award for his outstanding work, and I believe we're going to get that one up on the screen, maybe. He sends, and this, I'm not making this line up, when I read this, I looked at Shelley and said, did he really send this? And he did. He, he wanted us to let, send his regrets and let the board know that he was unable to attend due to a family commitment, but he wanted us to thank the school board for all that you do to support the arts. And as you can see, he is very well-supported, such a talented artist. Emily Brinson won first place at the State National History Day Competition. This means she gets to go to the National History Day Competition in Washington, DC to represent South Carolina and compete for the national title. Just a little side note, South Carolina has two people in the top. Right behind her is, right behind Emily is Sabrina Carroll, also from Blythewood High School, and they are the only students from South Carolina going to that competition. So Richland Two got, got the run on that competition. So they couldn't be with us, but we wanted to recognize them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ruff. Next on our agenda is our faculty focus. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, I'm going to call Nancy Gregory to briefly introduce faculty focus, and then I know that we're going to have folks from leading up who will make that actual presentation.
Mr. Jackson, board members, Dr. Hamm, leading up is our faculty focus this evening, and we have Jessica A.G., Kiana Kils, and Ron Huff, who are going to share their experiences.
Good evening, I'm Jessica A.G., lead teacher at CFK and CFK North. I'm excited tonight to share briefly with you about the leading up project that we've been working on with the district. Let me do this, too, sorry. This is a professional development opportunity for people who work in the district, not just for teachers, but those who hold any role within our district. And our mission is always to help people lead from wherever they are. This is the fourth year that we've been doing leading up, and it is designed and facilitated all by Richland Two's staff, and we have some of our facilitators with us here tonight. Would you stand? And then we're also really glad to have some of our hundred-and-forty-pass participants with us tonight as well. Would you please stand? And most, all of us who facilitated are also former members, and so it's sort of a grassroots organization, if you will. We have had a lot of success with leading up. We've had numerous action research projects, that's one of the requirements that we ask participants to do, and lots of different staff success. The content and planning which is done by the facilitators is all tied to the four squares. So each day, we try and organize our events around, surrounded by the four squares, of course, with our focus in the priority area of leadership. We've done book studies, as I mentioned, all of the groups do action research projects, and we've had two field trips this year, one to International Paper, and then the other was a tour of Richland Two, which was really wonderful. Hopefully, we can replicate that again and have all of you join us with our bus driver, Mr. Keith Greis, who was gracious enough to spend the day with us. And I'm going to turn it over now to Kiana Kils, one of our participants from this year, to share a little bit about her experience, and then directly to Ron Huff to share as
Well, I'm Kiana Kils, as she mentioned, and I have to tell you, this was my fourteenth year as a teacher, and I started it kind of discouraged and just not really excited about teaching, I have to be honest with you. And my principal, Sabrina Suver, was finishing up her doctorate, and my husband, Hodell, was starting his master's degree, and I was just feeling like, you know, everybody's doing something, everybody's excited, and it's year fourteen and I'm halfway there and I don't like it right now. And what am I going to do to get excited? I just didn't know what, what I could possibly do. And so then we got this email in August, and it just seemed to really speak to me, like, you want to develop yourself, you want to find out where your leadership skills are, the district wants to help you with that. I thought, okay, that sounds like something that I should do, and so I applied, my principal supported me, and I was really fortunate to be chosen. But I wasn't quite sure what the program was going to be about, quite honestly. And one of the first things that we got to do that really sparked something in me was this visit to International Paper, where they were telling us about people who don't have college degrees who are making eighty thousand dollars a year. And I thought, you know, I have students who are not college-bound, and now I can see that it really matters that I say to them, you got to be on time. You have to do your work, you have to put your cellphone away sometimes, because the HR guy, International Paper, was saying, we're having to let people go because they can't put their cellphone away, because they show up fifteen minutes late and so on and so forth. And I thought, okay, these life skills really do matter that I'm teaching, and it started to kind of click a little bit, like, I'm not wasting my time by saying, honey, this is the way we do things. Another thing we did that just made my mind kind of explode a little bit was we watched this video. It was called "The Five Levels of Leadership." And, um, great video, but I found myself at the end of it going, you know what, I feel like I'm at level one, and I've been teaching for fourteen years, and what am I going to do to get to level two? And he was saying, you know, one thing you have to do is you have to get buy-in from your people. And as a teacher, your people are your kids, and you have to find out, you know, what am I doing well, what am I doing wrong? And that scared me. I wasn't really interested in finding out what I was doing wrong, but something had to be wrong, because it just wasn't feeling right. And so I started asking my kids, what is wrong? What can I do better? And I gave every one of them an index card, and I said, guys, you know, just be honest with me, you don't have to put your name on it, just be real with me. What is wrong? What am I doing correctly? What works, what doesn't work? And some of the things I read made me smile, because they were really sweet, especially the ones who put their names on it, they were usually really sweet. But some of the kids were not saying things that, that made me feel good. I had some tearful afternoons that week, because they were saying, I really need you to fix this, Ms. Kils, it doesn't work for me. And I never would have asked, I never would have had the courage to ask if it were not for leading up. And my kids had a better quarter three and a better quarter four, and I'm just so grateful for this program. I don't know what I, I can't imagine going into next school year feeling like I felt at the beginning of this school year. So, you know, as a product of Richland Two, as now a teacher in Richland Two, I am so grateful that Richland Two takes care of its own and that you have this program where you care about us enough to let us grow where we are, help us get invigorated again. You know, this was really life-changing for me and I think for my students and my future students, and I just thank y'all so much for this program.
Board members, it's an honor to present to you this evening. I was given the opportunity to participate in leading up group this year. It was, it was a great honor and I learned a lot. Many of us have this image of a leader that it's, leader's this all-knowing and talented figure that stands and commands and protects his people, and this may be an image from another time. In the twentieth century, this is what we were perpetually led to believe, and it may be frustrating when every leader does not fit into that mold. You're told, this is the leader, this is the leader, and then when the different people in front of you that are leading don't fit into that mold, we get frustrated. Doesn't matter where you are, what position you are in the district, if they're not that thing that you know as a leader, it's a little frustrating. But a leader is not going to fit into that mold. Every leader is not going to fit into that mold, and that's what we learned in leading up. So it gives us, the leading up participants, a whole new outlook on life and work and teams, which is great. And lead up, we studied strength-based leadership. Strength-based leadership is going through an evaluation and finding out, what are your strengths? What type of leader could you develop to be? We found out there's four types. There's the executing, the executing leader, the strategic thinking leader, the influencing leader, and the relationship-building leader. So in the 21st century, it's a place that's constantly changing, so we have to learn about different new types of leaders. Because think about just in the last fifteen years, the different types of people that are leading the country now. Maybe when we were in the twentieth century, we were, most of us were all there, you know, that looked way different. The 21st century is constantly changing. So a 21st century leader has to be able to identify those strengths, can deal with a constantly changing world, and create a diverse set of solutions for the workplace and for their team. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all for hearing our presentation this evening. If you'd like more information, we have a website and we also have a video available. All of your presenters tonight are Richland Two graduates, so we were excited to all come back and share how we're making a difference in Richland Two now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is our public participation. No one signed up to speak to the board, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the board, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we'll be voting on the executive session items and student appeal. The chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion on student number one, referred to Blythewood Academy. Student number two, referred to Blythewood Academy. Student number three, suspension for remainder of the school year. Suspension for the remainder of the school year, student number three. Student number four, referred to Blythewood Academy with LRAID Act. Student number five, referred to Blythewood Academy and to the IAT team. Student number six, referred to Blythewood Academy. Student number seven, deny the appeal. Student number eight, we're going to table number eight. Student number nine, deny the appeal. Student number ten, deny the appeal. And student number eleven, deny the appeal.
Motion made by Dr. Ellis Johnson, is it second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Cheryl Caution-Parker. Any further discussion? Ms. Manning.
On student number one, does that student go to the IAP team at Blythewood Academy or just the Blythewood Academy?
No, we have Blythewood Academy too.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote.
Yes, I do.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, a new business action requested. It's the authorization for the superintendent to apply for available state, federal, foundation, and other special funded programs for the 2015-2016 year. Dr. Hamm.
This is an annual request that we make so that I can, so that I can sign off on available state, federal, foundation, and other specially-funded programs required by the superintendent.
Any questions, Dr. Hamm? Any questions, Dr. Hamm? Chair will entertain a motion.
No approval.
Is it second? Move by Ms. Brill, second by Ms. Mackey. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote? Motion passes seven zero, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, under new business, no action requested, an alternative to expulsion recommendation for certain categories of offenses. Dr. Hamm?
Report by Katina Davis and Cleveland Smith, if they're available to answer any questions you have. Present the information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Hamm, Mr. Smith and I have worked at your request on a proposal to consider for alternative to certain categories of offenses, and we'll talk more specifically about those. But we would like to thank Dr. Vickery, our, for working with us, our lead nurse, Dawn McAdams, and Mr. Garrett for assisting us in preparing tonight. And Mr. Smith will present the first part, which focuses on the discipline aspect, and then I will come back and review the intervention piece.
Good evening.
Good evening.
List that there are the policies that we will use to discuss this tonight with you. These are the policies that are guide us through these student discipline issues that are listed right there, those eight policies. This chart is an illustration of the data involving sexual offense infractions from the years 2011, '12 through the current school year. Listed there, we have sexual harassment, and we see in 2011, '12, that number was 40. So far this year, that number has decreased to 17. Inappropriate affection has pretty much remained the same over the same timeframe. Sexual violations has gone up some, went in 2011, '12, it was nine, and it went up to 13 this year. Also, at the bottom of this chart, there are the numbers per year for the infractions that were sexual offenses, and we see in 2011, '12 year, we had 151 total, and so far this year, we have had 120. We did have a spike in the 2012-2013 school year, went up some at that time.
If we could, so we don't have to go back, help me out on, on the chart, where we have inappropriate affection, we had a consistent number, except in '13, '14, we had zero. How is that not reported, or what do you think happened there?
That year, there, it was zero that was reported, in Incident Management, which is in Power School. Not sure why it dropped all the way to zero, but it was that for that year.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Per your request, the administration has looked at proposing, implementing, intervention plan to address reducing the number of students being expelled for sexual offenses. Listed here are the guidelines that the hearing officers will use when sexual offenses cases come before us, and the guidelines that we have come up with for the first point is that the student must not have any offenses of sexual nature prior to that recommendation that has gotten in there. They must be on grade level. The student may not have any out-of-school suspensions. Parents must sign off on participation in the program, and students will be placed on strict probation upon signing up for the program, and some will return to their home school, base school, and some placement may be for our alternative program, either Anna Boyd or Blackwood Academy. In addition, during this time, they will not participate in extracurricular activities. Expulsion will be waived, so they will not be expelled if they're in this program, and students that are accepted into the program and fail to follow through with the obligations of the program, if they come back up for expulsion, they will be expelled.
Hear your opinion again, Mr. Smith. Go back to that first proposed sexual offense guideline.
Yes, sir.
Our, the goal of the board is to make sure that we capture as many students as possible who are participating in these types of behaviors.
Yes, sir.
It would be good to do some sort of analysis on our current student cases that fit the criteria, to make sure that these categories of elimination would not allow us to capture the majority of the students that we're trying to capture. For example, being on grade level, having been out of school for suspension, and those two in particular.
Yes, sir.
Just, I really don't want, if, if, if the typical student who's participating in this type of behavior is a student who is behind in his grade level, which may be a part of, part of the cause, or a student that's been suspended, is now participating in this, which may be a part of the issue, I hate for those things exclude them from being, from being able to receive treatment for the very thing that we're trying to, to address. And so, not directly just to you, but you and Ms. Davis, we really want to look at making sure that those categories would not be, would not have an over-representation of this year's current students, if we were to use that criteria, or those criteria.
We can look at that.
Thank you, sir.
Just so far.
For the referral process, we have broken it down into three levels, minor, moderate, or major. A minor offense, if it comes before the hearing officer, we can see if the student, if it's a minor offense, the student will be returned to the home school, and they will have to attend this program for six intervention sessions. Example of that could be, like, you have two students, a male, female, running the bathroom, and they're in there for like two or three seconds. That could constitute a minor offense. Moderate students would be referred to the alternative program, and again, required to attend the six intervention sessions. And the major one, student, the expulsion by the hearing officer will be upheld, and that one, the parent and the student can appeal to the board for a decision. At this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Davis.
Well, you, I want to make a comment on that. I, I think one of my goals is to try to keep students in school as much as possible. And so when I look at the moderate offense, I, I mean, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to talk about what a moderate offense would constitute, but in my mind, it seems like that might be an offense where they could still stay in school and, and receive the same services. Again, with, in mind, to keep as many students in school, you know, as possible, yet still make sure that they receive the services.
We, we can look at that also, you know, we can look at, in certain cases, under the moderate, doing the same provision that we do with the minor.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Ellis Johnson, then Ms. Brill.
I would just like to add to what Mr. Manning just indicated, that that's truly our goal of making sure, and please forgive me, I lost my voice, and it's coming back and forth, so I do apologize. But just to talk about what Mr. Manning said about our goal is to make sure we keep students in school. With that, we need to go back and look at how students are coded in our system, because if you truly think about that, when we code a kid with a fray or disruption of school, that is reported as part of their SLED report. And once they get two, you only can remove one and have one expunged. So if we're truly talking about keeping students in school, then we need to go back and look how it's coded in our system, so we can make sure that our students are successful and they are able to have a career. Because just in Richland Two, if you have something on your SLED report, you can only get one removed. If it still stays, stays on your SLED report, you don't have the ability to work here. So when we're talking about homegrown, if we have one of our students to get in a fight their junior year, and then they get in a fight their senior year, they can have only one of those items expunged. But our HR department, we're not going to hire them or consider them because they have something on their SLED report. So, I'll just bring that out to the public and to the open. If we truly want to keep students in school, then we'll think about how we code these items in the discipline.
Thank you. Ms. Brill?
I was going to comment on what Mr. Manning was saying. I think at some point, we need to define what minor offense is, moderate, and major, and I'm sure we'll be doing that as we go further down the road, but it's a little bit hard to, you know, say where someone fits in if we don't have a definition. Thank you.
And I'm going to move on to the actual intervention piece. What we're looking at doing is proposing that we utilize a curriculum that has been developed by Sexual Trauma Services. Their curriculum complies with the South Carolina Comprehensive Health Education Act, and is in accordance with the South Carolina Health and Safety Education Standards. And as a part of this, we're also wanting to use staff members that have some training in mental health. Why are we saying that? Because during the sessions, if we have a student that exhibits crisis, we want to make sure that the instructor knows what to do and can immediately handle it. If the child brings up abuse, they will have the skills to address it immediately and not have to wait until the next day, they will know what resources. So we're looking at staff members that are highly trained in this particular area. Also, we're looking at doing the sessions in district, and we considered off-site and consulted with Mr. Jackson, and gave us some wonderful feedback, and recommended that we utilize Richland Two facilities for this, so that students felt positive about the experience. So we will be looking at facilities that will be appropriate for parents and for students. The sessions will be very interactive, they will be 60 to 90 minutes, and they are required to be done in order, and I'll talk about those actual sessions in a few minutes. But the sessions, students will all have to start in a group and go through one through six, so we can't have students starting intermittently. So some students may have to wait until we have a pool of eight to 10 students to get started with their session, but we have a plan for that as well. There are six sessions, and the sessions are divided middle and high, because of course some topics are more appropriate for high school students versus middle school students. And I'll just give you a highlight of a few of the sessions. Session number one, the effects of gender stereotypes and media influences, and students will learn how to increase awareness of impossible standards created by media, and identify other peer and societal pressures. They will spend time discussing damaging effects on gender stereotypes, and explore positive alternatives to overcome peer, societal, and media pressures. And session number four, healthy relationships and prevention of teen dating violence. Students will be introduced to early warnings of unhealthy relationships, and discuss techniques for reducing risk in relationships. And they'll increase their awareness of personal values and the effects of an unhealthy relationship, and how that can have an impact on self-esteem and other aspects of personal well-being. So we will spend time focusing on not only the sexual offense, but the child as a whole, and building their self-esteem, and as a part of their learning, they will have a multitude of activities that they will do surrounding the topics for each night. In order for us to implement this intervention, we would need a budget for that. Training is required, Sexual Trauma Services, their training is $750 per person, and so we have a total there. We thought we'd start with six facilitators, three elementary, three for high school. And one piece that we thought was important was to add a group facilitator, and that person would be responsible for keeping up with the database of students who's supposed to be in it, and also monitoring the fidelity of the program, someone going around, making sure that the facilitators are actually implementing the curriculum as it was written. And we're also going to ask that person to keep a database, so we know who started, who completed it, and so that it's one person. Of course, Mr. Smith and I will continue to monitor and work, but having that one person that we're paying to focus on the instruction. And then supplies, of course, they're doing activities, and then we want this evening to have a little snack, some water for them. So we're looking at an estimated cost of about $11,000 for, to fund the program. And that's just a quick overview framework based on the, the request of the board.
Questions, comments for the board? Mr. Manning?
A couple. One, I see pornography listed here as one of the line items. I, I think that what pornography concept probably has changed with social media, we see students taking pictures and posting those out on the web. I would hope that maybe we could define those more towards the sexual nature, so that we can have students take advantage of these services, which I think is the intent that I would like to see. So I don't know if that counts now as pornography or something different, but wherever that falls, that, that leans more towards this type of service. The other is, I know that, that you said that they're not able to participate in athletics and other things, which is fine, but what's the timeframe? So I know you said it depends on when it starts, and how, how long could they potentially be on probation?
I would say six to nine weeks would be, you know, once they start. If we could do a group every week, then they would be done in six, but if it takes about three weeks to get started, the holiday falls in there, then it could be up to nine weeks that they would be involved in this process. The only delay would be if we're waiting for a group, and we would try to get it started as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I just want to keep an eye, if we, you know, everybody agrees and we go forward, that there's not a huge variance, you know, from one student to the next, just depending on start. Depending on sport seasons and other things, I mean, that could have big impacts, so.
It sounds like we may need to put in a specified length would probably be a good recommendation, maybe to say, everybody has a certain.
At least a cap, yeah, maybe help. I don't want to, if you're fine with that, I am too.
Yes, sir.
Let me, let me piggyback on that, Cam, Mr. Manning. Why wouldn't we not consider having run consistent or concurrently with the same amount of time they would do right now if they were sent to Blackwood Academy, rather than, I, I know there's a training period that maybe runs a little bit longer, but I'm just trying to figure out, right now, the same student with the same offense would be sent to Blackwood Academy. This sounds like same student, next year with the same offense is given maybe twice as long, or three times as long.
The issue would be if student A was number six on the list, and we're waiting to get eight to 10 students, which is what Sexual Trauma Services recommends for a group, and we can talk with them about how firm they are in that, but that's their recommended group size. So that's really the issue in starting a group of this type, and that's kind of putting that delay in there, as far as running the curriculum. I hope I'm answering your question.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is, I'd hate to keep, but I guess the good news is that if it's, but back to Ms. Brill point, if it's, and Ms. Manning, once we define what's minor and moderate, if they were continuing in their school setting and doing this after school, I'm not as troubled by it as I would be if they were sent to Blackwood Academy. This didn't start on time because they don't have eight, they finished at Blackwood Academy tenure, but they're still waiting on, on this. This didn't extend beyond that, I guess that's why I'm troubled. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
That's my concern.
I think we need to look at that piece, because we don't want that to delay them returning to their zone school.
Absolutely, absolutely. Ms. Brill, then Mr. Manning.
If they remain at their home school and they take this course or this session after school, can they continue with all their activities? I didn't see that in here.
In the material, because during this time, they would be on probation, and that they would not be able to participate in extracurricular activities.
Okay.
Manning, would this run over summer school as well?
We haven't talked about running over summer, if that's a recommendation from the board, we can do that, we'll just, we kind of based it on the school year as far as cost, so we would have to maybe add on a few more sessions.
Yeah, I don't even know if there's enough time, I mean, the length of the program, it may not fit, but, you know, I imagine summertime, we may have some of those same issues, and maybe there's something we can do with that.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir, Ms. Blank.
Have you anticipated any metrics in place to determine the effectiveness of the actual sessions? Or would it simply be that they go through them?
No, sir, I think in our partnership with No, sir, I think in our partnership with Sexual Trauma Services, they are very data-oriented and they will want to evaluate that piece. And we have not gotten that far with them yet because we didn't wanna jump too far ahead without the board's permission. But they like to evaluate the implementation of their program. So that would be a piece for us to examine. And then also, our looking internally with keeping our database, are we having students that complete the sessions and then find themselves in the same situation?
Right, that was gonna be my follow-up, is they're going to anticipate having a follow-up process to track these people coming through?
Yes, sir, that would be a part of what we're asking. That facilitator that we're giving that stipend to is to keep that database and monitor those students' behavior.
Other questions or comments from the board? Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Next on our agenda is a proposal, policy JII, student concerns, complaints, and grievances. Dr. Ham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Policy JII is an existing policy to which we're recommending changes that clarify the procedures for addressing student concerns, complaints, and grievances. And this is a reading of that proposal, that policy, and we'll be asking for action on the policy at the next meeting.
The board is aware of the policy and has had opportunity to discuss and talk about it. Are there any additional questions or comments to be made at this time by the board? Hearing none, we'll move on. We'll look forward to receiving this policy at our next board meeting. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a proposal for policy BDE, board committees, Dr. Ham?
Again, Mr. Chairman. Policy BDE currently prohibits the board from establishing committees of the board. The modification in this policy is to allow the board to establish committees of the board. And it provides the outline of process for doing so.
Questions or comments from the board? Board also has had the opportunity to brief on this policy as well. Any additional questions, comments? Certainly want you to share those. If not, we'll receive this policy for action at our next board meeting also. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our report from the district party and beliefs. Dr. Ham, task force?
We do have, as one of the nine priorities, a task force that's looking at the district beliefs. This is the last of the updates on the work of the task force. And Junior will be getting the full reports from all of the task force groups working on those nine priorities. And to make this update presentation is Mary Paige Voice and Linda Hall.
Good evening, Chairman Jackson, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Dr. Ham. What do we believe? I have to tell you that when I wrote a little passion on a post-it note back at our administrative end service last July and put it up on a poster that I thought aligned with a passion, and I was called to help to co-chair this task force with Mary Paige Voice. And I said, oh, my goodness, what do we believe? So I knew I was at the edge of some kind of chasm. I just didn't know how deep it was, how wide it was. But it really has been a rewarding experience. Lots of fun working with our group. So we did have about twenty, we have about twenty members of our group. I know this is a very busy evening, but I think some of them were able to come this evening. If you would please stand to be recognized. It's a very diverse group. And we had lots of very big ideas, very big passions, lots of thoughts. We certainly use the four squares in our mission statement to be able to center our thoughts. We still need more structure. We spent our first couple of meetings, we had about five afternoon-evening meetings, and really talk, really talking and listening, being very honest with each other, but lots of listening and trying to value and honor everyone's passions. Fortunately, we had a couple of things that helped us to center at this time. And one was the profile of a graduate. And this is something that Superintendent's Roundtable and the South Carolina Department of Education really is bringing to the forefront. And that gave us some things to, some little hooks to be able to hang our questions on. Ways of equipping for career in college and for lifelong learning in civic life. And also, we wanted to approach it from a growth mindset. So we did all read the book. We did a book study on Inevitable by Charles Schwann and Beatrice McGarvey. And this helped to center our discussions. The profile of the South Carolina graduate is a very clear picture of what our graduates need when they leave us and what our communities need for prosperity and effective democracy. So the knowledge, skills, and characteristics. If you look at the questions to the left, it got a little bit jumbled there. But that helped us as we were looking at some of the big ideas to talk about. Were we, do we have practices in place that did support this profile? Or did we need to abandon some things? Or do we need to tweak some things? So for example, one big discussion was access to AP classes. And many discussions about scheduling. So our first recommendation as a task force is simply the formal adoption of the profile of the graduate to have ownership of this across the entire district, to really understand what it means, what it's about. And then when we make decisions, for example, we have an example that spending limited resources, if we develop a strong character program across schools, does this help to support that profile? All right, and some takeaways from the book, Inevitable. I'm not gonna take the time to do this right now, but if you'll just imagine, if I asked you to get out your cell phone right now and show it to everyone, over ninety-five percent of us are gonna have a smartphone. Probably ninety-five percent of those smartphones are gonna be iPhones or Samsung Galaxy. So the future is inevitable. And these tools, these devices that we learn from, use to learn on a daily basis have so many similarities, but they're customized. And so how do we customize the tools with students? The textbooks, assessments, projects, so that it meets the needs of individuals? And another thing that the book helped us to do, the authors did point out some differences between beliefs and principles. And beliefs opens up to opinion and choice and some options, which is fine, we can always agree to disagree when we talk about beliefs. Principles, however, are grounded in research and they have proven rules that guide our work. They're non-negotiable. So another thing that these authors brought out a lot was the little phrase about, you know, be very careful not to throw out the baby with the bathwater. So you have to decide what are our babies? What are we going to protect? So if you look at a principle such as students learn in different ways, another principle that students learn in different timeframes, do we have some dirty bathwater that perhaps needs to be refreshed and warmed? But we don't just throw it all out without having something in its place. So we did look at many discussions about some of the dirty bathwater. For example, our administrative conveniences, a lot of things that we do, we need to really think about how our students are going to benefit. So that brings us to recommendation two. And you'll be happy to know there are only two recommendations. And that is to invest in the training and the technology to support and extend the learning time and access to learning in a functional way. We already do so much with maximizing technology, engagement of students, enterprise learning, STEM and STEAM and blended learning as we move forward into next year. We really want to think about how we can support that profile of a graduate, use those hooks, hang our questions, our thoughts, and our decisions. And we talked a lot about time being the constant and learning being the variable. Can we flip that around? Can we excite the passions of children? So along with this growth mindset and technology that we already have and we continue to learn, you're gonna hear some more about R2I2 this evening, which makes many approaches to these kind of concepts in a different way. So we think it's a very exciting time for Richland II. Do you have any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Manning?
I've seen in some of our surrounding districts, I mean, there are some that are taking really big risks. I think Lexington I has tried the modified schedule and a new high school. And so I hear a lot about we need to make changes in education. We need to look different. I see this belief and what you wrote about not throwing the baby, you know, in the bathwater and we need to make some different time. I mean, does this help prepare us for some of those big risks while calculated and certainly, you know, not just doing it ad hoc? But does it prepare us to truly take that step off the ledge and do something different by this belief system?
Questions?
We, as a group, and I hope that we were representative, I hope that we were representative of elementary, middle, and high, we were really, really challenged by that idea of learning has to be the constant. That has to be what's happening. And time has to be what is the thing that we change or play around with depending on what this student needs or what that student needs. So the question that you asked is the question that we will have to grapple with moving forward. It is clear that every student does not learn every subject at the same pace. And we have to figure out ways to use the resources that we have with technology to somehow change that time learning continuum that, in a way that makes sense for everybody and in a way that honors the way that, the way and the speed that everybody learns. There shouldn't be anything wrong with needing a little extended time to master a subject.
And I mean, I think we all agree with that. You know, my point is just, I mean, I know we've done one-to-one technology, that was a risk and we've done it. And I think we've done well with it and we're moving forward. But I think there are other risks that we need to look at if we truly wanna be different and look at millennial, you know, we talked about millennials in the workforce and how the workplace needs to change. And we see some companies that are really doing that. And they're putting everything on the line and they're risking that. And I think that, you know, this is just me speaking as me, but, you know, I think that there maybe are some places where we need to find what that next big step is. R2I2 is certainly a big move in that, but I think some of our traditional high schools, elementary and middle, other than minor adjustments, really don't look all that different than they did when I was in school. And so if we're really truthfully wanting to get our students there, I think we have to be willing to take this and turn that into a risk of some kind. Lexington I has gotten blowback. They've also gotten some champions, you know, for that modified schedule that they have. And so that's just one example, not saying that's what we need to do. But I think this was good work and I hope we can take this and lever that into, you know, being able to accept some big challenges and truly think differently, not just minor adjustments as we go along.
Other questions or comments from the board? Let me say, ladies, I thoroughly enjoyed your presentation and I would, I wish that Mr. Manning had been at Ridgeview High School last Friday morning. And I'm sure Mary Paige can relate to that because just what he asked is what we saw in a big way about a number of students. I was blown away at a project where a teacher gave them time each week, I think each Friday, if I'm not mistaken. And what they did with that at the end of the school year was just absolutely amazing. So I think it's right, right in line with what he's suggesting, what he's saying. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a report on the summer programs. Dr. Ham?
Nancy Gregory will be bringing information about the summer offerings that we will have.
Good evening. Tonight, we're gonna report on summer programs. And you have a list of many of the activities. It's a pretty comprehensive list. I'm going to start with elementary school and highlight just a few of those programs for you. If you remember, last summer, we piloted a Read to Succeed Summer Camp before it was required. And this year is actually the first year of implementation from the legislation. And we are happy through a grant from the United Way that we are able to expand our offerings to include a recent family night dinner that we held for the families from reading camp with over 200 members in attendance. Family service offerings were available that night from the Richland County Public Library to South Carolina Thrives and job services for our parents. We are also adding an on-site social worker and providing field trips with United Way's help to enhance the camp experience. This camp will be housed at Rice Creek. We've even worked with the Boys and Girls Club to provide aftercare for interested families. In addition, the YMCA is going to pilot a literacy camp for first and second graders at Rice Creek Elementary. Again, the theme for this summer is community partnerships. For middle school, like to highlight Leadership Development Academies. We had this, or have had this previously in a partnership with the Columbia Urban League. But at middle school, you will see these offered at Dent Middle School and Kelly Mill Middle School. Again, they are sponsored by the Columbia Urban League. It's an outgrowth of the work of our discipline task force. The academies are designed for 10- to 13-year-olds across the district. And the camps will focus on academics, life skill development, career awareness, and service learning. At middle and high, we've chosen to highlight engineering camps. You'll notice that you see engineering camps via the CAT grant partnering with Clemson University and ideology. Also, we wanted to mention, not on your list, but we'll have a second cohort of iOS Swift programming at Midlands Tech. And that's being offered as a satellite course for R2I2. One of the last things that is a longstanding tradition is tri-district arts consortium. It is thirty, or it's been thirty years. And that's why we wanted to mention that tonight. We're going to celebrate thirty years of this partnership with districts in the Midlands. And Dr. Proctios has something special arranged. We will celebrate with artists from Greece. The Greek artists will teach mosaics. And we will have one from Japan who will teach abstract art. And 138 of our students will be participating in tri-district this summer. So United Way, Boys and Girls Clubs, Richland County Public Library, Columbia Urban League, Clemson University, Ideology, Midlands Tech, just a few of our community partners who are enhancing summer experiences for our students. We have over 107 summer opportunities available. Also, note that we've added a Pinterest board for camps with the help of Libby Roof and her staff. And that's available on our district website for parents. So we've talked about students. I'm gonna give you just a quick preview of summer professional learning. We usually give you a lengthy report at the end of the summer. But these are some of our larger events. And you'll notice that we have at your place a listing of all the sessions that our great teaching and learning department has developed or is offering during the summer institute. Over eighty-five sessions to deepen content knowledge, everything to CPR and maker spaces for teachers to engage, go deeper, summer professional learning. And New to Two is going to be offered in late July with teachers in schools on August the third for school orientation. I believe we already have eighty teachers signed up for New to Two. So again, just a little preview of what we have going on for the summer for students and parents. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board?
Going to be a busy summer.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a report on the R2I2 Innovation Technology Center. Dr. Hamm?
Mr. Chairman, as we're getting closer to the opening of that school, you've requested monthly reports on the progress we're making. And so to make that report, the very first in a whole series that be month, happening monthly, is Baron Davis.
So a good evening, Chairman Jackson, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Hamm. I stand before you this evening to give you an update on R2I2. And just real quickly, an agenda of things I'm going to touch on briefly in this presentation, which will be the initial curriculum, additional program and bell schedule, transportation, and the next presentation preview. Initial curriculum, one initial curriculum course that has been identified is mobile and non-traditional food and service provisions. This will be 170-minute course. What we're attempting to do here with R2I2 is to offer ours, to maximize our students' time while at R2I2. So this course will be a combination of two strands. The strand, one strand will be the business strand, one strand will be a culinary art strand. And this course will require just simply one teacher, which will, which costs the district one FTE for those position. Here, the students will focus on the operation of food truck businesses, including culinary responsibilities and how to, how to determine and execute a viable business plan for mobile businesses. Second course will be the Apple Application Development. This is just a continuation of what we're currently having, currently housed at Midlands Tech, with our partnership with Midlands Tech. This will be an 83-minute course. Of course, we'll have one credit, one strand. And of course, this is in our IT strand here. Managerial Accounting and Finance, again, this is in our business strand. It's 170 minutes, 170-minute course. There'll be two focuses. There'll be the managerial accounting focus and the finance focus in this course for students. Again, one strand, one class, two, two credits. The course will cover a wide range of topics that will emphasize the use of both internal and external data to enhance decision-making. And in that nature, I'm not going to read it to you word for word. And the next one is our Global Logistics and Supply Chain. Again, 170-minute course, one strand, two credits. This strand is our global or our supply chain logistics strand. The topics include and coverage of emerging and important topics such as service, supply chain, security, sustainability, and supply chain vulnerability. Students will be given an introduction to the key quantitative techniques that will be applied to logistics such as simulations and modeling. Our next strand will be computer-aided aid design and manufacturing. Again, 170-minute course, two strands. The two strands of focus here will be IT and our advanced manufacturing. We'll also, and students will also have the opportunity to earn two credits. The computer-aided manufacturing software CAM will be used to create CNC G-code programs for CNC machine centers. The next strand is the, is the next Energy and Fuel Cell Engineering. It's an 83-minute course, one class, one strand, one credit. We will, we'll look to contract a teacher and have a teacher reg here. So this strand will not, we will not be asking for an FTE for this strand in the initial phases of R2, opening phase of R2I2. Students will learn about ecology and earth systems as well as engineering for environmental sustainability. We'll also have a component for R2I2 for all of our courses where each course of R2I2 will have a component of students working to complete a pre-approved innovation project. This will reflect what was learned in their R2I2 classes and each student will be responsible for 20 hours of independent work. But they may work as teams if, with prior approval. Some additional programming opportunities we'll have, student think tanks, innovation incubators, and R2I2 business ventures. Career, career explorations and soft skill training will also be a mainstay, a main part of R2I2. There will be other opportunities based on funding when it comes to areas of certification and we've talked about those things initially in our initial presentations. Students will be given opportunities for workshop, internships, job shadowing opportunities, career mentors, all in an effort to expose them to different careers. Our proposed bell schedule for R2I2. The proposed bell schedule, our first period class will start at 8:10 and this period will end at 11 o'clock. The second part of the day will start at 1 and end at 3:50. And so you can have two classes within period one, that class being from 8:10 to 9:30 and again from 9:36 to 11 o'clock. We are looking at, looking at the transportation. Looking at the transportation for this and our proposed transportation for now during the first year of R2I2 is to, students will have, provide transportation to R2I2 in the morning, the initial, for the initial period. But we will transport those kids to their home school. And then those students that are at their current school will be transported to R2I2 for the second half of the day and then provide transportation to, either to their home school or back to, to their home as bus routes are permitted or will allow. We are, in our next preview or our next update, we will talk about registrations and the process for enrollment as well as some of our summer program. If there are any questions?
Questions or comments in the board?
Mr. Chair, I have Elkins Johnson.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, I'm sorry.
I have a few questions. The first question is, Mr. Davis, why are you presenting? Mr. Adversy is the director of the program, so why isn't he standing before us doing this presentation? That's the first question.
Well, it was decided that I, I decided that I will take the lead on presenting to the board and provide updates to the board until the school is, until it is fully running. We want to make sure that we have one voice and that we're consistent in our presentation to the board about information so there's no confusion of where we stand as the programs continue to unfold and the, and the school continues to be developed.
That's a very good answer and I know we discussed that. But I think you can get with Mr. Adversy since he's going to be the face of R2I2 so parents and everyone can also be able to see him and that's still one voice. His voice is coming through your directors.
That's, that's absolutely right. And as we visit and attend school events and other public, in other public arenas, we are together in those presentations for the purpose of delivering information and updating the board. I am taking the lead on that.
Okay. The other question, you said the time would be, yes, I have a few. The time would be at 8:10. What about those students who may arrive on a late bus? How would they provide transportation to get over there?
Students, students that are taking or sign up for R2I2 that will be in the morning shift will have to provide their own transportation to school in the morning. So if they are riding a bus, it would be wise that they not sign up for a morning class and try to work in the afternoon class for their course. Our purpose or our plan is to duplicate these classes in the first half of the day and in the second half of the day to be able to accommodate students' interest as well as, as well as the purpose of building the course as well. So a student will be able to take the same class in the morning that they will be able to take in the afternoon and vice versa. So if they have transportation issues, hopefully we'll be able to, we'll be able to accommodate their schedule.
Yes, because that concerns me because if you say this program is for all of our students, then we're not providing that for all of our students. If they have to provide their own transportation in the morning. So that's something I would seriously like for the board to take a look at because that's not being fair to those students who cannot provide their own transportation. And again, as we discussed, R2I2, we stated that it will be for all students and we would give all of the students an opportunity to do that. And now it looks like we're remigging on what we initially stated.
There were several considerations that were taken into place to determine the start time for R2I2. One of the considerations is we also offer early-birder classes for all students and they're available to any student based on their selection of courses or their interest in course. However, we do not provide transportation to early-birder classes. Those classes start at 7:25 at the very high, very high schools. With R2I2 being identified for 11th and 12th graders in the first year, many of those students will, do have an opportunity to provide their own transportation to school. In addition to that, we are limited in the number of buses that we are able to run throughout the day. And so if we are running buses in the morning from five of the comprehensive high school settings to R2I2, now we put a strain on the bus routes that we have going to our high school settings. And so there has to be some sort of accommodation or some sort of adjustment made in order to be able to provide, to be able to have the classes and get the students there. The same considerations were made in the afternoon as well. Again, we have a limited supply of buses and therefore having R2I2 end at 4 o'clock gives us the opportunity to provide those students with some transportation home. However, if we try to end R2I2 bell schedule at the same time the other five high schools are ending, again, we will put, we'll put a strain on our bus routes. We already have buses that are double and triple routed. And so we had to make some adjustments in order to be able, in order to be able to get the students to and from. And that's why we chose the morning.
Did we consider this when we started this program? Did we consider transportation? Did we place that in the funding? And Mr. Jackson, I think that's something that the board needs to discuss because as I can recall, when we first started this process, we said that they would come before us with the curriculum and we would go through that with them before we present it to the public. So that's something we really need to talk about, especially with the time because again, we're not being fair to all students. When I was in high school, my mother couldn't afford a car. She was a cafeteria worker. So that would have denied me the opportunity to take part of something that's public education because my mother could not afford a car. So that really concerns me. And my final question is, I know we talked about offering something like welding and some of those courses. Can you tell me on what slide that course would be offered under?
Well, welding is not, none of the slides that I present to you give any indication that we are offering welding within the first year. We can't accommodate or, as we discussed in our trip to, to CAP, we can't accommodate every course offered in year one. One of the things that we had to do or decided to do was to scale back and really think about the courses that we can offer. Right now, we don't have the equipment or anything like that to be able to offer welding, but that does not, that does not exclude that there may be, there will be opportunities for students to get certification in welding programs as well as any other type of class. But currently in year one, welding is not in the course offering or the suggested course offerings. Again, we cannot accommodate the number of courses that we potentially would like to offer.
Okay, once again, I'm going to say that and I'm going to say it loud and clear for everyone to hear and understand. If we are going to be a school for all students, then we need to make sure that we offer an opportunity for all students, every student, low income as well as high income to be able to participate. So I'm a little disturbed about what I just heard because we are not providing for those students who come with low economic backgrounds and I'm disappointed.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Any other questions, comments in the board?
I have a comment.
Yes, Dr. Carson Parker.
Very good report, well thought out, with very well planned. You have to start somewhere and you have to start and you have to build. Again, I too went on that trip to Kansas, outstanding program. We look at two programs, I believe. So outstanding programs and I commend you and your staff.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, just one other thing I want to say. I too had an opportunity to go to Kansas and when you think about the program that was offered at Kansas and if you look at demographics, it looks nothing like Richland, too. Thank you.
Again, let me say how much I appreciate the presentation, Dr. Davis. I am excited about what's happening. As I said publicly, I want us to start and get started. We can debate where we go from there, but let's get started. So thank you for presenting where we're going to get started from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the agenda items for the June 9th, 2015 Board Meeting.
Eventually a change in policy because our current policy is out of compliance with state regulations now. And then we'll be asking for the second reading and that will be the final approval for policy JII and policy BDE.
Are there any other agenda items the board would like to see added to the future, to any future board meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Before we can add any more agenda items, can we go back and take care of the items that we've added two and three months ago that we have not gotten to? I have about two items on that I requested about two or three months ago and they still have not shown up on the agenda. So before we keep adding, can we go back and revisit those items?
Would you like to specifically mention the two you're referring to, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, one was Sedesco when we were talking about the food service. And I think the other was, I think it may have been the teacher transfer, but I'm not sure. But I know Sedesco is most definitely one of those.
All right. Thank you. Any other agenda items that would like to be added? Mr. Manning?
One item I think that I brought, brought up a long time ago but would like to reintroduce is our logo. I know we talked about the possibility of maybe dropping the ignite and spire and whatever the, the phrase is that goes with the logo. If we could maybe bring that back up?
Yes, Ms. Mackey?
I, a few months ago, I want to discuss about choice and the numbers and the data for the different schools. I don't see there, yeah. A future agenda item, I don't see it any longer. It was on here one time, but it's not now.
I don't see any of the agenda, future agenda items listed here, not on my screen. I think, I think, I think they may still be, but they didn't appear referencing the comment you made, Dr. Elkins Johnson, and you made, Ms. Mackey. We only have on our screen, Jill, the two for the June 9th, but not the future.
Is it coming out of packets?
Yes, normally on the screen though. Normally on our, on our thing here though.
Right.
Okay.
The library.
The library. Yes, I see it. Thank you, Judge Jeff. Choice is there, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Elkins Johnson, the food service is there as well. Thank you, both of you. Next on our agenda is the Public Participation Part Two. Anyone signed up to speak to the board? However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, you may feel free to come up and do so at this time. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our Board and Superintendent Comments. We'll start with, with Dr. Cheryl Carson-Parker.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations on all the recognitions and awards this evening, especially to our students. And I wish you the best as we close out another school year. It's been a very good year, successful, very positive. And I know this next school year is going to be the same. And as you wrap down for the summer, get you some rest. You've got a lot going on. You've got a very busy summer ahead of you as it is. And I'm looking forward to the graduations next week. The marathon is what we used to call them. I guess you still call them that as well. And I just want to thank you for another great meeting and a positive meeting and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Plank?
Yes, first, I just wanted to, did what Ms. Carson-Parker says about the awards and all the hard work that's done. And I love the lead-up program. That's, I wrote a few notes here. Some of the words I heard were courage, grateful, let us, let us grow, life-changing, new outlook. And it's really neat that when you spend time in the art of self-discovery, you know, there's usually amazing transformation. But it's true that when we're in this rapid pace of change, that, that, that the journey becomes the destination. And this relates to things like R2I2 and the other programs that we have and the goals that we set. And I heard someone saying earlier that there's such a, we have to come up with a diverse set of solutions that we do start. And it's neat to see a group of leaders here who are so passionate about jumping in and, and starting the programs that have been outlined. And the challenge becomes how do we, how do we meet the needs of all children, right? As we go through this process. But we do have to start and, and as we, as we continue to, to go forward, that we do work toward being as inclusive as we can. But appreciate all that's been done. Thank you.
Ms. Mackey?
As always, just thank you all for your time here. Been a long night, but thank you for being here and your patience and congratulations on all the student awards and especially to Ridgeview High School on their 20th anniversary. That's a big deal and praying for that family who lost their child. No one wants to have to go through that. Hope y'all have a pleasant evening.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I would like to wish all of the students, the faculty and staff, a safe summer. Also, I want to challenge my colleagues, the HR directors, as well as the hiring committee. I think about my experience as a teacher and administrator in Richland, too. Richland, too, has been one of the best districts I've ever worked and we do produce a lot of great, wonderful, awesome leaders. But I'm concerned because I want to make sure that we value all of the administrators that we have here by giving them an opportunity to move forward. Our administrators are so involved. They participate in a lot of our leadership programs and classes, like leading up, for an example. Also, they have advanced degrees. They have great experiences, but they're still being passed over. So what I want to say is I want us to be mindful that we say we want to grow our own, that we really, truly believe and do what we say we're going to do. Let's grow our own, let's continue to support our administrators, and let's be fair.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Ms. Brill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we had a very productive meeting. We had a long executive session and we got a lot of work done. We had a long executive session, and we got a lot of work done. A lot of things are happening now. It's not only the end of the year, but it's not the end of what we do. We're still working very hard on new policy and new ideas and welcoming your input and your ideas and what you all are working on, which is very meaningful. And just so very proud of our students and our faculty and everything that you all have accomplished. And we look forward to celebrating the graduation next week. Those have been two, two long days, really very exciting days to see all the kids that make it. And somehow, this year went very quickly, and I don't know how. All of a sudden, I blink, and it's on to another year. So I think we're doing really well, and I'm really, really very proud, proud of everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Ms. Manning?
Yeah, I want to make a, a comment on, on being positive. You know, we have a lot of great things that are going on in this district, and it was a board, sometimes we get bogged down in talking about some of the issues that we have so that we can move forward. But, you know, I really want to challenge every staff member, every community member. You know, we, we see so much negative. We like to publish in the newspaper all the bad things that are happening and the issues that we have in this district. And I don't see that about other districts in the newspaper as much as I see some negatives about us in the newspaper sometimes. We have to be our own advocates for this school district. And if all we talk about the people are the issues that we have and the problems that we have, and that's the platform that we want to stand up on, is community members, teachers, administrators, board members, and complain that there's parties on Memorial Day or whenever it is about all the issues going on, then that is the image that we portray about our district, and that will spread like wildfire out there. I want to make sure that we are all advocating in a positive manner for this district and the good things that are going on. Because if we don't do it, and our teachers don't do it, our administrators don't do it, then we're allowing all of those negative stories that we see sometimes in the media to really lead the way, or the stories that people perpetrate about the issues they have in their schools. So I hope that we will all do that, talk positively about this district and the things that are going. We can deal with the, the family issues within the family, and let's put a positive, you know, face on to those folks that are outside the family about who we are and where we're going. I think the R2I2 presentation, we have a long way to go. Hopefully, we can find some public partners with public transportation to maybe help assist and change their routes or the times they drop folks off. We have a potential bond referendum. I've asked can we buy buses to help deal with some of the issues that we can't get from the state. So we have to look at how we can deal with some of the, the issues that we have in the district and move forward, so I'm excited about that. As far as the presentation on keeping our students in school for the sexual offenses, the media is talking to our kids every day. There's a new song on the radio, and excuse me for my bluntness, but the name of the song is Wet Dream. This is what they listen to on the radio every single day, and we like to talk to our children about sex education maybe once or twice a year in the schools. I don't know how often parents talk to our kids about it, but I guarantee we're not talking to them as much as the media and the other students and the peer pressure is talking to them about their involvement with gangs, their involvement with sex, their involvement with all the things that we think that maybe they ought not do. But they're hearing and seeing that every day versus our occasional discussions with them about these problems. And so I applaud the district for taking, as I said earlier, a big step forward in how we treat these issues. It's a different time. I think the average age, and these are old numbers that I remember, of first intercourse is fifteen, first, that's the average age. So that tells you where the reality of where our students are versus where we as parents may want to think they are, or we as community members want to think they are. And so I appreciate us taking that step forward to do something different in the way that we handle that. And again, I, I hope everybody has a great summer, and I appreciate all the hard work, and I appreciate my fellow board members and all the work that, that you all do every day, and look forward to what's coming positively for us in the future. Thank you.
Dr. Ham?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, two of our schools last week celebrated milestone anniversaries. The Center for Achievement celebrated ten years with a fabulous program. It was just wonderful to see the accomplishments of the students who finished that program. Amazing success stories that, that I think brought a tear, probably did everyone's eye that was in the room to hear those stories. And then Friday night, Ridgeview High School celebrated its twentieth anniversary with a wonderful carousel of progress that brought smiles and laughter, and probably some things we should have cried about that happened in the history of that school with the building and other things that happened. But it was great to reminisce about the twenty successful years at Ridgeview High School. It was a wonderful program and wonderful celebration. And so I wish both those schools continued success and salute them for the success that they've had in their respective ten and twenty years. We are wrapping up a blockbuster year in Richland Two. It has been very demanding. I think it's been very productive. I also think we've seen huge accomplishments. But of course, a school year is all about the students. So next Tuesday and Wednesday, our five high schools will be having graduation. Wonderful to see those students walk across the stage for the first time. We'll be having graduation at the Colonial Life Arena, and we're expecting more than seventeen hundred students to cross the stage and wish them all well in their future. And while talking about wishing well in the future, we also, on this Thursday, will be holding the celebration for our newest retirees, and we do wish each and every one of them well. We say thank you for their service to Richland School District Two. We wish them health and happiness and a little more flexibility in their schedules. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Dr. Ham? Mrs. Brill said the year has flown by. I'm not sure I'd get very many hands and go up in agreement with her, but I think it has seemed like it's been forever, because we've done a lot of hard work this year as a district. I want to thank everyone in this district who's working extremely hard every day to do the very best you can for every student that comes before you, whether you're a bus driver, a cafeteria worker, a custodian, a teacher's aide, a nurse, a guidance counselor, a career development facilitator, a teacher, a assistant principal, a principal administrator, a coach, whatever your role is, you're making a difference. And we see it here in the numbers, and we see it in the numbers of students who are doing exceptionally well, students who come into our district with tremendous deficiencies and are now rising to the level of achievement that even they themselves did not think they could reach. It's as a result of every person in this district working and doing their absolute best. It takes courage to do that kind of hard work. It takes courage to always look for solutions. Easy to come up with problems and identify the problems, but the courage comes in when you try to find the solutions, and you're willing to roll your sleeve to achieve those solutions that you know will make a difference in the lives of the students in our district that we represent. And so I want to thank you as we end this school year for another tremendous, as Dr. Ham, another blockbuster year. It would not have been possible, possible without every one of you involved. So with that, I wish you the very best, a safe and productive summer. To you graduating seniors, I look forward to shaking your hands next week at the Colonial Center. Be there and don't be late. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, thank you very much. Have a good night.